Also pull down at their at their opportunity in order to be able to do this. So I didn't want to take anything more, but just say welcome. And thank you to all the great staff at the Office of Public Instruction for putting our children and our superintendents first. So with that, Crystal, back to you.
Thank you so much Superintendent. Yes, we are recording. We'll have it posted and then we'll send it out as well. So it'll be readily available. Along with the slides because we put a lot of contact information because I know this will be a little overwhelming with so many departments and attendance, but we're just hopeful that it helps. At least ease the start of a new school year for our superintendents as much as we can at this point. So thank you again for being here. Um, so with that said, I'm going to share my screen. And I believe we have our AIM unit to kick us off today. So what I've done is I've put who is part of the team, their contact information along with a link to emails. Um, and this will be shared. I'll put this in the chat as soon as we get started here as well. So thank you, Nicole. Kick us off.
Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for being with us today. My name is Nicole Thewatt and I am the AIM Unit Manager. I have been with OPI for nineteen years. Um, so I've been in a couple of different divisions. And AIM is the unit I'm in charge of, Achievement in Montana. It has been our state student information system since two thousand and six, and it operates through the vendor Infinite Campus. Um, AIM is the main source of data for other systems, including some you'll hear about today, May Fairs, CTE Assessment, Twenty First Century, among others. Um, so in the AIM system, we collect student demographic information, including name, birthdate, race, ethnicity, home language, and language of impact for English learners. We collect program data, including free and reduced meals, title, gifted and talented, Twenty First Century, English learners, foreign exchange, and homeless. We enter information collected by the OPI, including foster and migrant. We collect special education data, including evaluations, IEPs, exiting assessment accommodations, and alternative testing. We collect discipline information, including suspensions and expulsions, safe and gun-free schools. And of course, we collect student enrollments, including preschool and graduate and dropout information. So new for this year, all of our data collections will be done through a process called data validation and certification. This is the process we've previously used for dropout and graduation reporting, behavior, and this past year, end of year reporting. Now all of our collections will be done in this manner, and this allows each district to tell us exactly when their data is complete. The annual data collections that were previously can uh collected through teams will now be reported through Infinite Campus, including terms of employment, your TOE data, special education reporting, staff reporting, calendars, including aggregate hours and PIR days, and your courses. So you see on the screen, this is the AIM data unit, which includes myself. It includes Jennifer Straw, who is our data reporting guru. Andy Bame, who does graduates and dropouts, as well as non-public data collections. We have Shara Blair, who does all of our special education. And then not pictured here is Ian Beagles, who comes to us from CTE and also helps with General Help Desk. And then Marla Swanby is our project manager and business analyst. So some important notes from our division. We do have some online and in-person training scheduled for August and September. We will actually be on the road for three weeks in September. And there are signup sheets available on our webpage. So if you take a look at that, that will give you some more information about those trainings and those locations. And of course, my contact information is here as well. Um, so please feel free to get ahold of us anytime that you need anything related to AIM. And we'd be happy to provide you with any information that you might. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. And since we have such a large group today, we're going to um have all the contact information here for each unit. You can put questions in chat um or just reach out directly to each individual unit. Um, we're gonna hold questions um until the end, just so we can get through everybody. And if there's time at the end and people want to hang around, um, some of us will be available and absolutely will get the information to those who are not available to stay the entire time. So with that said, we are moving on to Dani.
Good morning, good afternoon. I guess it is afternoon right now. I'm Dani McCarthy. I am currently the interim Special Education Director and the Fiscal and Data Reporting Manager for Special Education. And one of the key areas that I'd like to discuss is the IDEA, IDEA eGrants application. It is not yet open at this time for special education. I am hoping that it will be live within another week or two. So superintendents will need to make sure that they are listed as the authorized rep and that they have access to the eGrants system so that those applications can be filled out. If at any time you have any questions regarding how to fill out the application, you're more than welcome to reach out to me and I can set up a one-to-one Zoom meeting with you so that we can um make sure it's done accurately. We also have uh some specific, there we go, data collection timelines that you need to be made aware of. Our child count verification happens in October. There, as Nicole, I think briefly talked about, there's the personnel um collection that will also be due, and that's specific towards special education paraprofessionals and related service providers as far as special education goes. There's exiting data collection that you will need to be aware of at the end of the year. School discipline data collection as well towards the end of the year, and the post-school outcomes uh data that will be open um mid-April through September. The one area that I did put on my slide is compliance monitoring within special education. We have that. Your districts are on a five-year monitoring cycle. If you have any questions about when you're due, you're uh more than welcome to reach out to John Gordon, who is our um school improvement manager, and he can let you know when that is, or you can go on our website and look that up. So we do, the districts are on five-year, five-year um review, and then our state-operated schools or state-funded schools, excuse me, are on a three-year cycle. Going over to the next slide, the last one, which is just all of our contacts. So there's, there's our contact information, um just of our leadership team. It doesn't include everybody unless you go to the link at the very bottom. And then you can um click that link and meet with everybody that's on the team. Patrick Hates oversees all of us in special education. Then there's myself. John Gordon, as I said earlier, is our school improvement manager. Everything with compliance monitoring, general special education questions that you might have, you can reach out to him or even myself. He has a team with him as well that uh can answer any of those general special education questions. Tammy License does our continuing education and technical assistance overseeing the MTSF, CSPD regions, and a multitude of other areas. Mandy Gibbs is our early assistant program and dispute resolution, which deals with all things special education uh laws such as state complaints mediation, IEP facilitation, etc. Thank you.
Thank you, Dani. I think we're moving on to school finance, and we realize it's a very large team, so they have two slides of contacts, um but Barb is here to kick us off, I believe. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I'd like to show you here the school finance team. And like I said, or like um Crystal said, this is not everybody, but uh this shows um our faces and our names and phone numbers and some of the job-related duties that we have. So then with that, Autumn is also here and uh from school finance, and she's going to do the driving if she can go ahead and share. And we're just going to show you a few things that we have on the website that might be helpful to you.
It actually looks like I cannot share this.
Is that a possibility, Crystal?
You should be able to now try one more time. I apologize.
No, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, this is our school finance website. And so the first thing that we want to show you is um you're going to need access to some of our systems. So if we go into this, the second accordion uh tab, at the very bottom, we have the application login link. So this will take you to the secure portal. Just above that is the school finance access form. And with that access form down just a little bit.
Oh, the form, sorry.
That's okay. Um, with the form, uh this is what you'll need to fill out in order to gain access to the school finance uh systems, mayfares, transportation, contacts, and county. Then if we go back to the website again, we have a application where access resource specifically for district superintendents. And if we go ahead and click on that, um what you can see here is, again, we have the school finance access form. Amanda Ziegan is uh the person that is the contact for taking those forms, as well as she is the contact for the contacts application. And your clerks will be doing updates for the contacts application. Um, also on here, we have uh the single sign-on portal that's just here in a quick um format for you to access it. If you have problems, there's the OPI Help Desk. You're also going to need the eGrants application, and Carla Beagles is the contact for that. Uh, again, May Fairs is listed with um Amanda. There is a link here also for the jobs for teachers. And then down at the very bottom is the information on contacts. So that will take you to the contacts information. And with that, we have some instructions that are there, as well as there's also a website, uh one of the OPI websites that is there, and you can go into that to get to that information. Um, again, I would just repeat that Amanda is the contact for any of these things, and she can help you out. Uh, then Autumn's gonna go ahead and give you a little bit of a tour of our website.
So the first thing you're gonna want to find on our website is under this first accordion panel on the main page, and that's gonna be our understanding school finance. Um, that, a lot of clerks and superintendents have that printed out and in their offices because you will refer to it multiple times throughout the year. And then getting into things you need to know about school finance. We do um your payments, your budgets, um bonds, um tuition and attendance uh payments, and school audits. Um, under the budget section of our website, you'll have everything you need for your budgets. Um, the instructions for your general fund budget spreadsheet that we post each year, your budget timeline documents, and your preliminary budget data sheets um that we post every year in March. Um, the next thing that is really good for you guys to have is under state school payments. These are the payments current and prior years um for each month that the states that the schools get. Um, and it is going to show the distribution of those payments and what they were for, whether it be your Indian education for all, your special education, or your regular direct state aid, um as well as the subsidy payments you get a couple times a year.
So can we take them there, the very bottom um schedule? That lists out all of the payments that you're going to have for the year. And then that very top accordion panel is the month-by-month advices.
Which is currently empty. We will, um those get posted usually a day or two prior to um the payment. The next section that schools need to be aware of is our audit section. There's information um here for the schools to use in regards to their audits. Um, and Kristen will be your contact for that, any questions you will have. Next step is our tuition and attendance. Here's gonna be all your forms, um with instructions, questions, guidance, um the calculation spreadsheet. All of that will be there for you.
We just want to uh thank all of you for the work that you do, and you know, one of the things that uh we hear most is the district superintendents. It works best if you work closely with your clerk in order to uh prepare all of this data. And then if you have any questions on anything, feel free to give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I will start sharing again. Um, I do want to mention that on the PowerPoint, I have shared it once, but um Ellery is collecting you to sign in so that we have who is here, and we will share all of the information with you. Um, it will also be posted, but each um link at the top brings you directly to each of the websites or the webpages for each unit. So it brings you right there as well. So school finance has um their two pages, and we will now move on to ESSER. Go ahead, Wendy. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. So my name is Wendy Fonz, and our team heads up the ESSER All Things Considered and the Large Funding for the ESSER One, Two, and Three um large grant that came into the state of Montana to help students and schools during the COVID pandemic. And um I just wanted to share a couple of items with you in terms of our website. Um, it is a lot of information that's out there, and it does change frequently because of the input that the uh federal government gives us and different compliances that we run up against. So don't ever hesitate to look at uh our webpage to get more updated information because as I said, it does change quite frequently. I'm gonna have um Rebecca Brown, who is our program manager, share screen. Um, Crystal, if you can give her the ability to do that. And we're gonna go ahead and move directly to uh the ESSER landing page, so that comes right off of our main website on the right-hand side. And when you go ahead and collect that, click that, you're gonna see a bunch of different options. And one of the things you see right there is a countdown. So that countdown is very important in terms of indicating when ESSER Two needs to be expended. And one of the things that's very critical, right now, we're getting ready to send out a quarterly notice, which will tell all of the um schools what you have still to spend and other compliances that may be in there, but this spend down day and hours, and then it goes into minutes and seconds, um is really important because ESSER Two will expire at the end of September of this year. ESSER Three will expend, will expire next year in twenty-four. So just kind of look at that countdown as a, as a reminder of spending. And um right now, we have several districts who have money that hasn't been, that isn't showing up in your eGrants. So there's kind of a complicated way to, to pull that up, but um would be a good idea if you think you may have some extra funding or aren't sure, just reach out to Rebecca or I, and we can walk you through that. The other hat that we wear is broadband. So there's a large grant that's coming into the state of Montana. Some of it has already appeared, which is going to be used for helping uh all residents, but also those anchor institutions, including libraries and hospitals and schools, acquire broadband, both the infrastructure coming into the building, but also the connection into the community. Right now, there is some funding for all students and families, um thirty to seventy-five dollars per month um that's available for families. So don't hesitate to reach out to us. I know that's not school-specific, but of course, students go home and have to do homework, and so that tie-in is there. So the broadband funding we do, um we're kind of, we're not managing that grant, but we do help administer and, and answer questions for schools on that. One of the major functions that the ESSER team does is to try and help school districts, school districts braid together funds. So recognizing that ESSER funds can be used for a wide variety of uh applications, we want to be able to help you to use the funds that are most restricted first, and then use the least restricted later. So we really help districts understand how they can use their title funding for one item, and then maybe a private grant for another part of a project, and then third, also use ESSER funding so that all those funds get braided together, and so that the reporting can happen, um separating out those braids, but actually the funding itself can come together to support the school as a whole project. Um, a, a major part of what Rebecca and I work with is the amendment process. ESSER is unusual in that it is a grant that can be amended. So you can go in as a new superintendent and meet with your board and decide, hmm, I think we're gonna go ahead and reallocate these funds differently than the way they were initially decided back in twenty-twenty-one. Then we have a bunch of training that's available on how to do that. Often, when districts asks, you know, I'm not sure what I do with an amendment, how do I process it? Is this an allowable use? There's a whole section of training that we have, but you're also more than welcome to just reach out to us by phone, have a conversation, or go through a Zoom process with us. We, we can set those up. Lastly, but not at all least, um some of the requirements that came along with the ESSER funding is the fact that we need to do data reporting. So we just got finished with doing that back in March, and it was an indication of how the funds were spent in the past and how the funds are going to be spent into the future. Um, we will again be jumping into that uh projecting is probably in October at this point, and asking about fiscal year twenty-two. Um, so just kind of something to be aware of. We will be diving into that ask on those items. Um, our phone numbers are listed and available for you to contact us. Um, we all have cell numbers. We all have um office numbers as well, and of course, our emails. Email works wonderfully for a lot of things in ESSER, um but at the end of the day, I think generally a phone call is a good way to follow up and say, you know, what is the status? How do I follow through with this? Um, we have myself as the director, Rebecca Brown as program manager. We also have Allison, who will be touching bases specifically with regards to uh summer pr- programming and after-school, and also with the broadband area. So um those are all of the staff that's available for you to contact at any point. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. We will, uh let me share my screen again, move on to the programming and start with federal programs. And I think Jack is here with us today.
Alright, thanks, Crystal. I'm Jack O'Connor. I'm the Federal Programs Director at the Montana Office of Public Instruction. Most of your main federal education uh program grants come through this unit. We support Title One Parts A, C, and D. Title One A is probably the one you're most familiar with. That's the Improving Basic Programs for those kiddos who are a little bit behind their peers. Title One C is migrant education, which is limited to several programs around the state where we have uh uh quite a few migrant workers, especially during the summer. And then Title One Part D, which is our neglected and delinquent programs, which are at juvenile detention facilities, Montana State Prison, um and at some of our group homes around the state. We also have Title uh Two Part A, which most of you are familiar with, which tends to be for professional development opportunities for teacher and principal retention and other training formats. Then we have Title Three, which is uh a specific grant for English language learners or for learners who have a heritage language of impact, like uh one of the, one of our many American Indian languages. We also have Title Five B, uh which is the REAP Program, the Rural Education Achievement Program. And uh as the state's agency, we assist districts with the RLIS portion of that. The final grant uh that we have is Title Nine, McKinney-Bento Homeless Education for those uh students who experience uh home uh a period of homelessness during uh the course of the school year. Uh, our uh staff, staff people are myself, Angela Brans, Fall, the migrant education director, and then Serena Wright, who is our homeless education director and Title One Specialist, and Kristy Hendricks, who works with Title One Part D, Title Two, and is our foster care point of contact. And if I could do a quick share here, that would be great. Alright, thanks much. Uh, you should see on your screen right now the main eGrants login page. During this time of year, one of the uh many things that my unit handles is the eGrant applications for federal funds under titles one, two, three, four, and five. This is the main login page, which hopefully most of you are familiar with. The one thing I do want to point out is down uh in the lower right under upcoming, you'll see some important dates that are coming up. Uh, September first is the last day to create an application for fiscal year uh twenty-four, which is the one we're in right now. It's also the last day to create an amendment on FY twenty-three applications. September thirtieth is the last date that you can submit an eGrant consolidated application to the OPI. And then October thirty-first is the last day that you have, that you have to have an approved um FY twenty-four application done in eGrants. If you do miss any of the timelines of the September first for creating the application or getting your grant submitted by the thirtieth, and then a final approved by October thirty-first, just remember that your board chair does have to send uh an email to the OPI requesting permission to get in to the grant application process, and that has to go to our deputy superintendent. So please make sure you hit the timelines. And that is all we have, and I will pass it back to Crystal.
Thank you, Jack. Let me reshare. And I think we are moving on to licensure, and we have Virginia here. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Just turning off my little desk heater here. Can you believe it? In August?
Uh, well, uh, we want to say welcome. We want to say welcome to uh Montana for those of you who are new to the state. Um, if you're a new super, just to being a superintendent or new to your current school district, well, then also welcome to the role. Um, I'll just give you a little overview of the licensure team and um what it is that we are tasked with. Uh, we review applications for all educator licenses. Um, that includes the teaching, administrative, specialist, career and technical education, emergency authorization of employment, and also internship. Uh, the state of Montana has administrative rules that govern educator licensure. And those administrative rules are not set by licensure. They are put in place by legislation and the Montana Board of Public Education. Um, and our team is tasked with ensuring, ensuring that applications are complete and that they meet those administrative rules. Uh, so those applications can be initial licensure applications. They can be a license renewal, uh upgrading your license, uh adding an endorsement to your license, or um as uh some of you have done, also adding an administrative or a specialist license. Um, we do specialize in administrative rules, so we want to help guide you um and just point out some things that you need in order for you to meet the minimum requirements in Montana. That way you can continue your career here uh in Montana or at your local school district now. Um, I'd like to give a brief overview of our webpages and licensure. If I can just share my screen here, like everybody else, we have a, a lot of information available for you. So I just want to point out some of the places where you can uh check in when you have a bit more time. Set correctly. And I believe if I am sharing the screen, okay, so this is the main OPI website, of course. You may be familiar with it, but to get to the educator licensure pages, just hover over the educators uh menu item, and that'll drop down to some menu. Uh, we are, licensure is over here. I'll just point out our homepage for now. Um, because we do keep uh sort of a live website. Because we do keep sort of a live website, we don't let it go static for too long. If there is something on this homepage that it is pertinent for the time, either of year or what's coming up next. So we do have our announcements on this on this main homepage. Down toward the bottom, you can find again, a submenu that will take you to more specific information regarding the licenses that are available and the specific requirements for those. Also adding an endorsement, renewing a license. We do have some links to other teams that we work closely with, but might not manage their, their webpages, for example, professional development. You know, that has a lot to do with licensure. And here, frequently asked questions, we do upkeep those as well. Our contact information is down toward the bottom. We're available through email. You know, I've heard it said by another team also, email does work well for a lot of things. We're able to get you some links or some information to read on through email or through a link. But if you do need a phone call conversation, then our licensure line is is listed here at the bottom of the page. See here, other teams, you know, as I mentioned, that we work closely with, but we sometimes refer people who call licensure to are also found under educators. But if you scoot over to teaching and learning, we work closely with the career and technical education team. You'll meet some of the team members in just a bit through this presentation. We also work with the professional learning team and their webpages here. And also, we get a lot of questions from people needing information on the teacher learning hub. Finance, earlier mentioned, jobs for teachers, again, they are listed under our subheading here. But we don't manage that webpage. So if you need information for jobs for teacher, we do have a link under the licensure menu, but we, we don't have access to their, to their platform. So that was all that I was going to do to screen share. So Crystal, if you'd like to share your screen, continue sharing your screen. I will just continue with the little summary that I had of licensure. We have some important dates for you to remember, and these are the sort of dates that we update on our licensure homepage. Teachers in Montana have 60 calendar days from their first day of work to register their Montana license with their local county superintendent. So once they start work, then they have 60 calendar days to provide their license to their local county superintendent. If you have a teacher working with an internship agreement, you know, we encourage you to work with the Montana College or University and with your teacher to make sure the internship is reported to the OPI educator licensure by November 15th. And then our last date that we'll mention is December 1st. That's the deadline for school districts to report the teachers they have hired to fill their positions. So even though that is reported to the accreditation team at OPI, you want your license, your teachers to have their licenses in place by December 1st for that school year. And from a licensure team perspective, you know, we, we have always been able to meet our goal in issuing licenses for everybody who has submitted a completed application to licensure by December 1st. If that date deadline changes, then you will have, you will hear, you know, that from Crystal, our unit director or the accreditation team. Some things that are relatively new that have to do with licensure, and some of you hopefully have benefited from them, is that Chapter 57 was revised in 2022. They have added some new pathways to licensure or to adding endorsements to current licenses. Again, we keep updates to any information that is new on our website. Some of it takes a little bit of reading. We'd love to talk you through things, but also reading, it might be good to just kind of go over new circumstances for yourself or your teacher and see if they qualify for something new. Our Teach Montana licensing system, we call it TMT, that is about one year old. But one thing that's very new for that, through that licensing system is that administrators, as yourselves, have some viewing rights. So you can see where a teacher is at in their application process. And so this will be beneficial if you are interviewing someone who has an application in place but has not completed their license application yet, then you know, you're welcome to encourage them along or see if in fact they have already had their license issued. Again, you can contact us through our email or through our phone number. We also want to schedule Zoom one-on-one for help with specific licensure questions, whether it's your own personal license application or a teacher's application, whether it's a process question, or if you need help with Teach Montana, the licensing system. So again, welcome and thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much, Virginia. And that leads us right into Shannon with CTAE.
Thank you, Crystal. And Virginia for giving us a little shout out. We do work very closely with licensure when it comes to those class for alternative ways to get endorsed for CT teachers. As you can see, we have a pretty decent sized team. We have five specialists within our team, and they cover the areas of agriculture, business education, family consumer sciences, health sciences, and industrial technology. So we run the gamut of all of the things. And I have a few slides. I was just going to share some pieces of information because we kind of work very closely with a lot of units here, as does everyone else, but we kind of weave in a little differently with some of our CTE information, so. Just your fun fact of the day, those schools that have strong CTE and CTSO involvement will see a higher graduation rate in their four-year graduation cohort. We have 456 approved programs across the state of Montana. So quite a few, I think we only have maybe two or three high schools that don't have a CTE course offered on campus. I say that because I wanted to share, if you are not aware, that graduation requirements have changed, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that from Hillary with some things. But I wanted to let you know that we do have an opportunity to help with that through CTE. So the economics and financial literacy piece can be from math, social studies, or career and technical education. We have financial literacy courses that cover across agriculture curriculum, business and marketing curriculum, and family consumer science curriculum. So there's several opportunities of things that a lot of our schools are already offering that will be able to meet that need. But just as a reminder, for those of you that are coming in, especially to those high school programs, they need to start offering those courses now, but the 2025 school year is the year that those graduates will be held responsible for having those credits. We've got a little bit of time to get them implemented to ensure that students are getting that half credit over the next few years. The big question that I usually get is about funding. So CTE does have a couple of different funding streams. One is state funding through state allocation. I did provide some links here to take you to our pages. So we have $1.5 million annually that gets allocated out to our high school CTE program. And I know Ellery, I think, is going to share these slides out, so you guys will be able to follow those links. The other is Carl Perkins, which is also an eGrants application. Ours is a little different cycle than Title, but we have a little over $3 million that goes out to our secondary program for Carl Perkins. We do have a Perkins Five Resource website that we encourage everyone to check out. If you are applying for Perkins or thinking about Perkins, there's tons of information there about the needs of supplement. All the, all the resources that you're going to need. I will kind of tease out that we are heading into a revision year. So there may be some adjustments, but I'll also provide an opportunity for public comment as we start in that process. Last funding stream that I wanted to mention, we do have a rural reserve grant that we have been using for special projects the last few years. The last few years, we've used it to target middle school CTE programs and the connection to the high school. Advanced opportunities through OPI as well as our advancing agricultural education grant. That, those links are also there. Advancing agricultural education provides funding not only to current programs, but to schools that are looking to add a program or add a teacher. So it gives some opportunity to help with that expansion. Another piece that I wanted to share with you is our Work-Based Learning Manual. This is a living document. It is housed on our website with lots of contributors. We connect with the Work-Based Learning Collaborative with OCHI, with lots of different folks to review this manual and keep it current with links and ideas for schools. Work-based learning is something that we strongly encourage. It's a great way to build partnership and give students some real-world experience as they are becoming college and career ready and Montana-ready. And then new to our group, they're not directly in our unit, but they are parallel to our unit, are the regional career coaches. And so I have a link to their page where you can reach out to them. They are going to be available to work with schools and help provide work-based learning opportunities or CP connections. And then the last thing I just wanted to leave you with is that we do host office hours. Our office hours will begin next week and be every Wednesday through the entire school year. Somebody will be on the virtual office hours from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You can hop in anytime on that day. And then if that doesn't work and you still need some additional help, you can always reach out directly to a specialist or our general email address there, and we will make sure to connect with you. And it doesn't just have to be on Perkins, it can be anything CTE-related.
Great, thank you so much, Shannon. We will move on, I believe. Let me share my screen, but I think Zach is here for Indian Education for All.
Yeah, thank you, Crystal. Good to be here. Hope everybody had a good summer and is excited about the year ahead and hats off to all of you as educational leaders. You know, you do the really, really critical, important work for the students in your community. So thank you for that. So my role as Director of Indian Ed for All is just to make sure that all districts, teachers, administrators have the knowledge, skills, and resources that they need to be effective with their implementation of Indian education for all across all grades and all subject areas. And so we do that primarily through development of, you know, new lessons, resources to help people understand the requirement and make sure that they have, you know, what they need to implement it, even if you know, it's just taking something off our website and doing a, doing a lesson on something related to EFA. Obviously, we also get out quite a bit, do professional development with teachers, help them understand, you know, show them different things that we have, listen to ideas that they might have, or different ways that they want to do Indian Education for All. And then we also have kind of a, you know, a policy and a standards function in terms of we advise on all of the content standards as they go through that revision process. You know, make sure that Indian Ed for All is in all of our content standards as well as other policies related to accreditation and things like that. We also are under the advisement of the MACI, which is the Montana Advisory Council on Indian education. And so we have a staff of basically 4.5 FTE to do this work. So again, Crystal, if I could share my screen, I was going to show our website really quick here. All right, there we go. Yeah, so if you come to the OPI homepage, if you go to the educators tab and then over under teaching and learning, about halfway down, you can find Indian education. And then it has our different units, but we are Indian Education for All. And this will bring you to our landing page. Few things I'll highlight, you can, you can give just a little quick tour of our website. The, the framework, if you're for administrators, if you really don't have a lot of background in EFA or what the expectations are, or how you should go about it, I would highly, highly recommend that you take a look at the framework because it will break down for you exactly what EFA support should occur in your district based on your size, your location, your demographics. It will also kind of break EFA into five key areas of implementation and give you lots of good information on kind of how to move forward in those areas. So that's kind of the how, our, our main how document for Indian Education for All. And then the essential understandings regarding Montana Indians is kind of the what. So these are the seven things that we want all Montana students and quite frankly, all Montanans to understand about Montana Indians and all of the lessons, all the curriculum, all the things that we have. You'll really get at those things. So if you look at one of our lessons, it'll have the content standard and then the essential understanding or essential understandings. We also have a pretty good document here. This is kind of our best hits of EFA in, in kind of the core content areas by grade level. So these are things that we know that people have utilized quite a lot, or that if, when they take our online hub course, they, these, these resources have really resonated with them as something that they would like to use with their students. So again, if you have a teacher who's just looking for a place to start, that's a great way to go about it. I'll just talk about a couple tabs that we have. So this is our classroom resources tab. And when you click on this, you can see that it has, you know, for all the different content areas, the different, you can click on any one of these and it will give you the grade bands and we'll have lessons that you can use. Also, we have these buttons, the request a curriculum button. So if there's a certain publication, a certain resource or something that you would like to have a copy of, you can request it online. Also, we really, really, really would like teachers to evaluate our resources that they use and give us some feedback. So I want to put a plug in for that. It'll go back to the homepage. I think this, I'll do this upcoming events and PD really quick. We have a whole bunch of webinars that we've previously recorded. Teachers can get renewal units for these, and we have all different topics, tribal sovereignty, boarding schools, ethnobotany, unpacking the essential understandings. So that's all content that's recorded, that's available for teachers just to build their background knowledge. And then again, they can get renewal units just by watching the recordings. And then doing a quick survey at the end just to verify that they that they actually did, you know, watch the whole thing, basically. And then the last page that I'll share on our tab is the general information tab. This has a great list of Montana, different tribal history resources, different information about the reservations, different maps, directory of all the different programs. We have a great compilation of different resources, links to not just Montana, but all different states. So if we don't have it on our website, you can check out these other websites. And then there's a lot of good information here. I wanted to share really quick. We have this, where is it at? The Funding Guide, where is it at? Funding Spectrum Guide, right here. So you, as an administrator too, if you're not you, as an administrator too, if you're not aware, your district gets, um, it's about twenty, twenty-three dollars and twenty cents um, per student or one hundred dollars, whichever is, uh, more, um, specifically for Indian Education for All implementation. And so, and, and, um, if you're not aware, also, there's a, there's a recent bill that's going to kind of require a little more transparency accountability around that. Um, so I'd really recommend that you look at this Funding Spectrum Guide because it gives you a lot of good ideas of how you can actually utilize that funding. Um, so these are all, these are all sites that I would just recommend that you check out, um, on our page. Um, but just a few other things that I'd like to share really quick. Um, so we will have every Tuesday, uh, excuse me, the first Tuesday of every month, um, from four to five o'clock, we will have a standing, um, just kind of like office hour, uh, but we'll, we'll offer up some, some timely information about things that are coming up, some just, just different resources, um, and just be available for Q and A. Uh, so you can, uh, that'll be in the compass as well as far with the Zoom link and the information of how to get, uh, to get on those, but we're hoping to, you know, provide that opportunity, that's a new thing, uh, just to help teachers and, and people in that way. Um, the end of September, uh, the fourth and fifth, um, Fridays in September are both American Indian Heritage Day. We'll have a lot of special events, uh, around the state for that, so I'd encourage you to look at our website as that gets clearer. Um, you can always request us to come out and do a PD with your staff. We love to do that, we love to get out, uh, meet the actual teachers who are doing the work and help them get, you know, excited and interested in doing different things with EFA. Um, uh, we have, uh, some traditional games kits that we checked out and they have instructions for, uh, the different games and, um, we kind of have to work with different districts logistically to get them the kits. But if that's of interest to you, please get ahold of us. And then lastly, we do have, um, we have some grants, um, um, available for, for schools that want to do more than just what they can do with their A and B funding. Um, so if you're interested in that, uh, there's a link on our website or you can contact us. But, um, again, thanks and I wish you all, uh, a great school year and feel free to get ahold of me or anybody on the team, uh, if we can help you in any way.
Thank you, Zach. I, I feel I'm learning so much even from all of our units across the OPI, um, and our goal, like I said, is to provide the information. I'm sure it all seems very overwhelming at this point, but giving you great links and, uh, resources for all of the areas. Um, Ellery is also taking note as, um, each unit is talking and we will add to that main presentation um, that I'm sharing right now, anything, so that'll be a central resource for you as well. Um, with that said, Doug, thanks for hanging in there with, through the whole presentation, uh, we would love for you to take it away.
Sure, can I get screen sharing, please?
Absolutely, one second. You should be good.
Yes, I am. That always freaks me out because Zoom completely changes my view. I'm laughing because now it's put the pictures of everybody right on top of my thing, so I'm hoping that you are seeing the Green Montana Autism Education Project page.
We can see it just fine, but I know what you mean because it did it to me as well.
Thank you, yeah, it's always a little freak out there. So I'm Doug Doughty, I'm in the Special Education Division, been there for a long time, for, uh, eighteen years. I was one of the school improvement specialists, the monitors going out and visiting schools. In two thousand and twelve, as we had an increasing number of students with autism, they asked me if I wanted to do autism full-time and I was like, sure, and they said, you want some money? And I'm like, sure, so it's a great thing, I work under the idea of part B set aside funds and for a state our size with as few staff as we have at OPI, it's pretty, um, pretty unusual and very good of us that we have an ability to focus on autism, although I'm pretty much the full team. So the OPI Montana Autism Education Project, a couple of different things that we do. We offer in-person and virtual trainings, and I'll talk about each one of these areas in a little more detail. We offer consultations for students with an IEP. Originally, we were just focused on students with autism, but we've expanded that over the years. So we can offer a consultation for any student that has an IEP, they do not have to be autistic. And last year, we saw students with, were deaf, hard of hearing, emotionally disturbed, autistic developmental delay, emotional disturbance and I think one other disability category, deaf if I didn't already say deaf. So we can do a lot of different consultations. And then lastly, I'll show you where to find upcoming trainings and other resources related to autism and behavior management. So for our in-person and autism behavior trainings, we have a couple of different levels there. We can do a district level or a regional level training upon request. Often, we work with the CSPD, the Comprehensive System for Personal Development on that, and I'll show you a CSPD link on my wrap-up. Uh, so we work with CSPD on that, we can also do district level trainings. If you're interested in a training, my email address is later on, just get ahold of me and I'll talk about what we can do, what we have available. Um, we have a number of, we have a menu of trainings that we can do and we can also develop something more sp- specific if necessary. We often provide scholarships to conferences and trainings and done by others. So the MCEC is the big statewide special education conference. We offer five thousand dollars of registration scholarships to that each year, serving about fifty or sixty people, making it able for them to attend by at least sponsoring that registration cost. Uh, we work with the Montana School Psychologist and the Montana Speech Providers conferences over time if they have something related to autism. We work with them right out front so that we can offer scholarships to those as well and give different levels of knowledge. The scholarships are really nice because they allow us to get knowledge to people without having to go through all the funding of getting the trainer, bring them in, et cetera, et cetera. We do, and when I go and show you the resources that we have on our green blog, we do have two current scholarships open for this week for the, um, Montcom Conference, which is this coming Friday, both in-person and virtual, so I'll just give a real quick shout-out on that when we get there. Um, you can always find our trainings on the blog and I'll finish up with the next to the last thing I'll show you is our blog of information and what we have out there. So that's kind of the things on trainings, we can come to you to do trainings, you can send your staff to trainings. In the last few years, sorry, I have different, I have three different versions of the slideshow for four different presentations this week, so, uh, for you, we, we're doing a lot of virtual trainings this year, we in the CSPD region saw kind of a drop-off in in-person training attendance because, uh, people are having a harder time getting out of the staff classroom due to short staffing, et cetera. So we do offer a lot of virtual trainings, some of those are later in the afternoon, ninety minutes to three hours, um, just so we offer a real variety of different topics like that. The consultations, we can do an individual student consultation and essentially that's call me up and say, hey, we got this kid who does this thing or won't stop doing this thing and they're on an IEP. We could help with that, we also do what we call classroom level consultations because sometimes teachers are unfamiliar serving students with autism, so one of our consultants can come in and just hang out for the day and go, oh, here, move this desk over there, here's a different way you can present this information. Here's a little trick for getting kids to line up, so we do both individual and classroom consultations. Again, any kid that is receiving special education services, we can provide a consultation on. We go everywhere with our consultations, this is a map, a couple of years ago, we've added to it a little bit, but I was starting to run out of room for town names, but we go all over the states, our current consultants are based in Billings. We have one in Billings, two in Bozeman. Um, one in Missoula, and one in Missoula. Yeah, that's four, just doing the math in my head, we're in the midst of some stuff related to that. I also do some consultations and Katie Mattingly, who was one of the school improvement specialists, also does some consultations in Northwest Montana, up in the Flathead area. So we go all over the place for consultations. If you are in need of a consultation for a kid, just drop me an email and we can talk and work on that and I can take you through that process. I won't walk through that process at this time, typically, it's the special education teacher who gets hold of me. Okay, uh, typically, it's the special education teacher who gets hold of me, sometimes the special education director for that district or for that cooperative. Only school staff can request consultations, we don't take parent requests to do consultations. It has to come from the school, we didn't, that's a, been a longstanding thing with the program. We didn't want the program to be something where a parent's like, well, I'm going to sick OPI on you. So a parent can request to you and make that, and then you can make a determination if you want to follow through, but we only come in when a district invites us in. They come in, they hang out for the day with a student. At the end of the day, they will sit down and meet with the staff, talk about what they've seen, offer some suggestions, and then we always follow up with a written report and resources to that. Uh, once we've done that written report, we're more than willing to come back in so long as people are working and following some of the recommendations within the report. We realize sometimes that the team might sit down and go, uh, that's just not going to work with this kid, sounded good at the time, but it's not going to work, so again, we can consult on the kid multiple times if necessary, so long as changes are coming. If you're interested in a consultation visit, all they got to do is drop me an email, that gets the process rolling for consultations. Oh, good, I'm going to swing something over here. So this is our blog of information, if you search for Montana Autism Education Project, typically, your first result will be the mt.gov site. Uh, that one talks more about the project and it does have a link to the blog, but look for the dandelions or as I've just highlighted up above, look for mtautism dot OPI connect dot org. And the reason for the separate blog page is that to update an OPI webpage, I have to send information through, um, IT, OPI, then they've got to do it, they put on HTML with the blog, I can update this in minutes and get the information out there. Last year, we did ninety-three trainings, so it's a lot easier if I'm able to update this stuff than sending ninety-three different requests through IT and then having to take off the registration thing after it's over, et cetera, et cetera. So here's the blog, this is where I have to try not to get lost. We list our training under upcoming trainings, uh, we don't have a lot scheduled for August at this time, we're in the midst of some contracting for some of our usual people. I'll be adding some within the next week or two that OPI staff are doing, so always our upcoming training shows what's out there. Uh, on the blog, you can click on so many things are, if you click on training, that's another quick way to just see what trainings we come, have coming up and what we've done. Montcom is the one that I was talking about, it's an upcoming conference on AAC implementation, uh, using alternative communication for kids, really good thing. So in Missoula, we do have a couple of virtual registrations left until Thursday, it's happening this, um, it's happening this Friday, but we still got a couple of spots left due to cancellations. So trainings will get you to that and it just shows some of the trainings that we've had. Dr. Jennifer Schoffer classing will be doing another training series for us this year focused on behavior, she's doing, trying to remember, uh, she's doing like fourteen trainings, three different times across the school year, and then we have a week in June where she basically does two trainings a day. So last year, we had a lot of different topic areas. Next year, they're going to be more focused on behavior management and go deeper into some of these areas. Uh, so that's where we are. Also on the blog, you can find, and there's a tag for Montana data, I won't jump back. If you're ever interested in data on the number of Montana school students with autism, hey, we got it for you. I'm a behavior specialist, I'm a data person, so we do this every single year, so you can look and see how our numbers have changed over time. Uh, the age range changes, our age is a pretty strong curve. I was changing year to year, I have not yet broken out, but we also do Native American data and comparison on that. So if you go on the blog and under Montana, so many things there, but they're all necessary. If you look under Montana data, you'll see our most current stuff and you can see back across the years of, um, how many consultations we do per year, where do we go? Uh, the, the blog is where I really have to struggle not to get lost. This is a pretty cool map that turns into a video and over ten years, you can watch these counties fill in with students with autism. We only have a few counties now that don't have any kids with autism. Those are the kind of counties that have like six hundred and fifty people in the whole county, but it's really grown. And I'm going to jump out at this because I can get completely lost in the whole data thing. One other spot for your special education people to find trainings is, this is out on the OPI blog, uh, if you go to the OPI blog and you go to the Special Education Division, so it's educators, special education, go in there, scroll down and on the left side, it has our blogs, so it has the Autism Project blog and then it has the professional learning schedule. This is for the five CSPD regions in the state and we update it and Carpenter in our division updates this all the time. So you can look by region and see what trainings are going on in that region related to special education. So this is just kind of the quick summary page. And then it goes into all the different trainings that are going on, so this is another good way that you can be aware of what trainings are going on and the CSPD regions are also doing a mix of in-person and that. So again, just special education blogs, Montana Autism Education Project, uh, professional learning schedule, and I'm going to stop there. I'm done.
Thank you so much, Doug, great information and I love the blog. Um, so I will hand it over to Ellery, um, last but not least, for accreditation. It's sort of how this whole idea of a new superintendent, um, workshop came about is because of all the changes to chapter fifty-five and accreditation. Um, so I will let her finish up, we've also added to the slides some divisions that weren't able to join us to do today that we thought were important for you to have contact information for, so I'll quickly go over those at the end. And if we have time for questions or if you want to hang around, um, we will be here as well. Alright, Ellery, thank you.
So as Crystal mentioned, my name is Ellery Bressler, I'm an accreditation specialist at OPI and we have a new accreditation specialist starting on Monday, um, Michelle Price and then Crystal is our director. So as some of you may know, or may not know as you're new to the state, um, our rules, which are chapter fifty-five of accreditation, just went under a big revision. It hasn't been done for years and years, so, um, that being said, we're doing a slow rollout because there are lots of new rules, a lots of updated rules. So this is what we're looking at our year one, our coach and guide year. Um, we do have a think tank that's getting together to get some rubrics finalized and some guidance documents together for the districts. And I'll show you where all that information will live and we have, um, have that all finalized, but this is what we're looking at year one, so our ISAP components, which was replaced with six L one, which I'll go over. We're going to require that you do a CNA with a gap analysis, a family and community engagement plan, which is new, uh, professional development, uh, and then plans to show progress towards your graduate profile. Some of your assurance standards, which are the same, I know this makes more sense to those folks who have been with us for a few years, but, uh, we're still going to pull those from Infinite Campus, so your teacher class, your TOE, that making sure people are licensed in their area and teaching in the correct area, all of that will still be required, but that'll just come from Infinite Campus. And then for the student performance standards, we're just looking that you show proficiency and growth this year in English and math, so those are just some examples there. So the separation of the accreditation and annual data collection, so as some of our older superintendents know, we used to go into a program called Teams and enter in all of our yearly information of who was working at our school, what classes they were teaching, all sorts of stuff, so about ninety percent of that is moving to Infinite Campus, through the AIM unit who started us off today. Um, the only thing you'll have to go back into Teams and do is your compensation expenditure TOE for, to finish out the, this twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, those are folks you hired after the closing of Teams and the end of the fist, between the end of the fiscal year. So between like November first and, um, June thirtieth is there, July first. Uh, um, you'll have to go in and enter them into Teams. And once we get there, I can, uh, you'll probably have me help you or the finance team will help you get that figured out. If you have any questions on AIM, which we already talked to Nicole today, she's our, also in this presentation at the beginning. And then our new accreditation platform is expected to be ready in January and our tentative, uh, accreditation deadline is March twenty-ninth, so that licensing deadline is no longer going to be December first for accreditation purposes, it'll be moved to the official date that we decide, like Greg said, right now, we're just, um, tentatively deciding on March twenty-ninth. Um, and then all pieces for accreditation purposes only that could not be collected at Infinite Campus will be entered into that platform and then we'll pull over the data we need from Infinite Campus, so you'll still have an annual data collection in the fall, it just won't be with us anymore. So here's our new rules and rules with changes, um, significant changes. So our six L one accreditation standards and procedures, grants and standards, and our basic education, those all have pretty significant updates. And then you'll see over here, we had some new rules added, so we had our charter school application, which used to be embedded into a six oh four, but it is now its own rule. Family and Community Engagement Plan, Mentorship and Induction, Evaluation and English Learners. So six oh one, we used to do what was called a continuous school improvement plan, that plan has been removed and we are replacing it with the Integrated Strategic Action Plan. Uh, what this plan includes is a graduate profile, educational goals, planned progress towards Plan progress towards implementing all content and program area standards. Strategies for assessing progress towards meeting all content standards, professional development. A description of how they'll meet programmatic requirements and of state and federal grants. And strategies for addressing the needs of gifted and talented students. I am not sure why it's cutting that off. Children with disabilities and. Anyway, various to standards. We have the biggest change here is that the due date is now going to be. The second Monday in October of the current academic year. So that used to be the March before. And now it has just moved to October. So this will give you guys a chance to evaluate if you have. Enough staffing and specifically it's been used in the past for counseling and library staffing. If you end up getting below that threshold of the classroom enroll or the school enrollment, then you can. Not apply for variance. If you're just right over, that gives you a chance to be able to apply for that as you need. The basic education programs, they all kind of had the same update, but that is that they will have. Students will meet the content standards and content specific grade level or grade blend learning progressions. And recognizes the distinct and unique cultural heritage of American Indians. And then instruction in reading literacy and writing literacy will be incorporated into all required and elective program areas. So. See that same update here. And then here is. What we had for the high school. So you're going to see the same update. Within their twenty coursework, they need to be beating the grade band, grade learning progressions within the. And recognize the distinct, unique cultural heritages of American Indians and instruction in reading and literacy and writing literacy shall be incorporated. But the other new change for the high school is the new program offerings which Shannon had talked about. Specifically that financial literacy piece, but. One that you will have to at least offer is the, within the three units of social studies, including the half unit. Of civics or government. So now within those three units of social studies that is required. You also need to include a half unit of civics or government. And then a half unit of economics or financial literacy, which can be. Embedded within the social studies, math or CTE. So like Jen had mentioned, you still have to offer it this year, but it'll be for. It'll need to be on the transcript of the senior class of twenty twenty-six. So a little bit of an extension for those grads. So here is our Google site for updates. If you just go on our main website, which is linked at the very beginning of this. Of our, where our names are, you can see the link there. It'll take you to our. Google site, which is going to have all of our guidance documents that we. Are still actively working on, but we do have a quite a bit of robust information on the graduate profile right now. And any updates will be there. And then our next steps, we've got virtual office hours through the summer that are Tuesdays, ten thirty to twelve, and then. Starting in the academic school year, it's going to be three to four thirty. On Tuesdays and then you can see the rest of our professional development schedule here to come. Anything that we're doing in person is going to be a hybrid option. We also have some all-day work sessions as we get closer to that March twenty ninth deadline. So. That is all that I have.
Great. Thank you. I'm noticing my screens backwards. I was distracted. So I will just quickly share some of the departments, like I said, that were not able to join us. First being assessment, lots of exciting things happening in assessment with the massed. Pilot program for assessment. Montana is the first state to receive any kind of waiver and. So I am sure I have not looked at their website, but it will be ever changing and very robust as. The state moves into a different direction for assessment. Cedar is the director and those are her staff members at this time. And they do have helped us number to call. Traffic education. If you have a high school, Dwight and Leanne run that program, Dwight being the director. Their website has a lot of great information as well on what that looks like and some of the areas that teachers can get that endorsement for. School nutrition. Christine is the director. They do have a nutrition programs line. Christine asked me to include some of these links as well, the school nutrition checklist. All of these things can be found on their webpage, which is linked at the top here. But these were areas that she would like, she wanted me to point out. So you'll have access to that as well. And Michelle Henson is part of our school mental health program and she, I think there are others, hopefully. The staff is short right now, but we'll be joining her, but she is great. She's working with. All of our schools, community members on our school mental health program. And thought that would be an important area to put as well. And I think that is what I have to share today. And I cannot believe we did it within the time period. I thought for sure we'd run over, but that's great. Again, I know this is a ton of information. You're just getting started in a school year. We just wanted to have this opportunity that I know we have not. Had in the past where you are at least seeing. Just a little bit from all, you know, the many areas at the OPI and I hear through each one of the people that presented. That we are here to support you. So. I thought it would be a great idea to get a face and, you know, with the name so that you can see. How many people that are here to support you. Honestly, I know we get questions time to time in license and accreditation that. I cannot answer, but I have been with the OPI long enough to know where to find the answer and it is something that we do throughout the agency. Not as long as you, Doug, but I'm getting up there. So with that, I want to thank you for attending. We had a good group today. This will be posted as well. If you have. Want to look back on it, the information, if you did the sign-in sheet will be emailed to you today. But. We will stay on at least Ellery and I and Virginia possibly Zach, maybe although that are here and that's why they're here. If you have any specific questions for any of the program areas. I know a few of you are putting some things in chat personally to me that I will look into as well. But at this time, I think we can be done recording. And if you have questions, concerns or thoughts for us here, we will stay on at least until two, if not a little after to answer your questions.